Okay, everybody, it's a little after seven, we're gonna call the meeting to order. And there's handouts over there if you need them. All right. Notice a special town meeting, Town of Woodstock, Connecticut. June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven P. M. A special meeting, a special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the Town of Woodstock, Connecticut, will be held on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven P. M. At the Woodstock Town Hall, four fifteen, Route one sixty-nine in Woodstock. The meeting will be held to consider the following actions and to vote on the following resolutions. Number one, to elect a moderator. Two, to approve the proposed budget of the Town of Woodstock for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, in the amount of thirty million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, as has been recommended by the Board of Finance, and to appropriate said sum to meet the recommended expenditures. And number three, to adjourn. Uh, please note pursuant to section seven dash seven of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Woodstock Board of Selectmen have, on their own initiative, removed the foregoing item number two for submission to the voters of the Town of Woodstock by referendum to be held on July first, twenty twenty-five, from twelve noon to eight P. M. at the Woodstock Town Hall. Voters approving the question will vote yes, and those opposing the question will vote no. Absentee ballots will be available at the office of the town clerk. And this was dated on June twelfth, uh, of twenty twenty-five and signed by all the selectmen. And just so you know, Joy and I will be setting up in Room A after the meeting, so if you need an absentee ballot, you can apply and we can give you the ballot over the counter. Uh, we'll be in Room A. Um, do I have any nominations for moderator? Karen?
Ed Higgins.
I have a nomination for Ed Higgins, do I have Mike Doherty? Do I have any other nominations for moderator? All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Eh, Ed, what up?
Take three.
Yes.
Crystal, I said, I guess tonight, we're going to be live streaming the meeting, and also, um, if folks would like to make a comment or ask a question, I think the idea was to come up here so they could hear you over the microphone. So, um, if we can have, we do need a, a motion to approve the budget in second, so that we can have discussion, does someone make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is that a second? Second, thank you.
Ed, who's seconded?
Fred.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, at this point, I think, Chandler, do you wanna come up and go over what the changes were made from the last budget?
Sure. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I see, uh, some return faces, but also some new ones, which is great, and I love it when people get involved. We're fortunate that we live in a place where we can have an open discussion at a town meeting. As everybody knows, we're on our third try here to pass a budget. Uh, after the twenty, uh, May twentieth referendum failed, the Board of Finance set a new budget of six million, six hundred and sixty-nine, uh, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, thirty-one dollars to go to referendum on June tenth. On May twenty-second, the Board of Selectmen, uh, made adjustments of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollar decrease to libraries, specifically, no funding for the North Woodstock Library. Um, that was brought forward to the, to the voters at the following referendum on June tenth, uh, that also failed. So, a new budget was set by the Board of Finance of six million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars to go to referendum on July first. On June twelfth, the Board of Selectmen approved the following decreases to the proposed budget that failed. Uh, first item is five thousand dollars to the first selectman's salary. Second item was twenty-five hundred, selectmen contractual services for the Celebrate America two fifty. Next one was four thousand dollars to the finance department, this would be dependent on the Board of Selectmen making the treasurer's position appointed as opposed to elected. By doing that, we could appoint the finance director, Karen, to be the new treasurer, and that would be eliminating the six thousand dollar line item. Because he's, uh, it's currently elected, that person would stay on the term until November election. So, this year, we see the four, uh, we see the four thousand dollar savings. Moving forward every year after, it would be a six thousand dollar savings. The next item is thirty-seven hundred dollars for the building department part-time staff. Um, when things are real busy, or when our part, when our building officials on vacation or out sick, we get a person from another town to fill in to keep things moving and try and keep the inspections on time. Um, s- we've decided that that was a place where we could cut, it's just gonna mean some delays in certain building services. Um, the next item is three thousand dollars for police protection, uh, there's no longer gonna be any constables on the weekends at the beach. Twenty-five hundred, it's the Day Kimball Home Care. Uh, this still allows the twenty-five hundred, which has been the tradition in the past, they requested five thousand, and we dropped it by twenty-five hundred back to twenty-five hundred where it was. Uh, we also felt that we could take away five thousand dollars from the assessor's legal line item. Um, just to be warned, this might have to go back in next year. It's a reval year, and that's usually when we get more confrontations and people questioning and pushing back on that. Um, five thousand dollars from the town hall maintenance. Uh, the three selectmen have, on their own initiative, decided to provide the labor to redo the bathroom that desperately needs to be done upstairs, uh, as long as the town pays for the materials. And thank you, Kate and Chris, for that. Uh, we removed six thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars from the contingency fund. That is the in-case slush fund, um, that we count on in case something goes wrong. Um, and we're just removing some money out of that. Uh, another item, big item, is sixty-four thousand dollars from highway, from highway staff. Um, we're trying to get back to nine full-time employees instead of eight and a part-time. Um, the reason we're able to do this is because we're gonna take, uh, the sixty-four hundred, uh, sixty-four thousand from the town aid road grant budget, which we really don't like to do. Um, anytime you've got a grant, you can't count on it coming down the pike again, you never know when it's gonna dry up, and it's just not a, it, it cannot be sustainable at times. If that grant disappears, then that person disappears next year. Uh, but, once again, we're just doing the best we can. Uh, and the last item is thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars from the highway roads, tree removal and parts. Um, it, it, it just hurts Jason and the crew up there. Parts are incredibly expensive for these new machines that we've got now with all the emissions. Um, tree removal, we're still cleaning up trees from five years ago. Uh, we really hate to take money out of that, uh, we'd like to be able to get rid of as many dead and dangerous trees. Uh, we do have a new tree warden in Woodstock who's been working with Jason, trying to identify the most, uh, dangerous and, and insecure trees to get rid of. So, that brings the total decrease from the last proposed budget that failed at referendum. Uh, we decreased it a total of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Thank you, Chandler. Karen, did you wanna go over some changes in revenues that the people should?
Um, I can, there's not much, but I would be more than happy to, Ed, thank you. I had put on some handouts out there, so I'm hoping everybody was able to get one that's labeled, um, the two thousand twenty-four grand list with the fiscal year twenty-six budget. Um, I just kinda wanted to go over some information that may help understand where the revenue loss in the town is at this point. So, I worked with the assessor, um, to kinda go over some different things to, um, let people know what our exemptions are. We have abatements and how much revenue that does actually hurt the town. So, in this particular grand list, um, we had approximately twenty-one million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars in exemptions, which equates to about four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars of revenue loss. That's based on this actual mill rate, the current mill rate at twenty-three point zero four. We also have an additional, we call it the circa break it, abatement, it's senior housing. That's, um, a reduction in revenue of fifty-three thousand, forty dollars. Last year, the town approved an elderly tax freeze. It's a, um, income-based program that also reduces revenue by eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We have dairy farm and fruit orchard abatements. Uh, this year, the amount is eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars. And due to COVID, this was a state statute, so any daycare center, there's a five-year program that they are, if, as long as they own the building, they get an abatement of their taxes. So, we have one daycare center in Woodstock that qualified, so that was an additional, um, eighty-two hundred dollars in revenue loss to the town. So, that right there equivalates to a total loss of five hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. Then I spoke with her about the new motor vehicle taxation, um, the way that the state now has the assessments. It, I guess it used to be based on a different, like, um, Kelly book or NADA book value, now it goes by the MSRP. We're able to, um, begin the depreciation at ninety percent. You may, or may not, see a tax difference, um, when you get your, uh, motor vehicle tax bill, because this was intended by the state to help lower that tax burden on motor vehicles. That right there this year is a hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars loss in revenue. So, due to the abatements that I went over and the motor vehicle tax reduction, that only allowed a one hu- one hundred and nine thousand increase in revenue from this grand list. Last year, it was two hundred and seventy thousand, so there's a difference of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars we need to make up there. Then we had some either revenue loss or reductions in grants, and I'll go over those really quick. So, the education cost grant, that's a grant we get for education, that's approximately a hundred and thirty thousand, it's really a hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and fifteen. If we're lucky enough and our governor does sign the new bill, we might get that money back, and that could help bring the mill rate request down a little bit as well. Um, revenue share grant, we were getting that, and, uh, this year, we had this current fiscal year, we budgeted for it, and we received a letter from the state stating that after their, um, responsibilities, they'd no longer have the funding. So, in this current budget, that's a hundred thousand dollars we budgeted for that we're not getting, but it's also a hundred thousand dollars we can't budget in the new year. So, that's where the two hundred thousand in revenue share is based on your municipal spending cap. So, um, basically, what the state says is that, other than inflation, if you go over two-point-five percent expenditures from the previous year, you're gonna get a reduction in revenue share. Um, however, this year, we didn't get it. Um, and then, so, we, if we take all of that into consideration, including the revenue loss from the grand list, our total revenue that could have been used towards this proposed budget would have been an additional six hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars, which, based on what one mill is equivalent to, that is about a point six four mill. So, if our current budget that's being proposed right now, we're, we're guestimating with the revenues we're expecting to come in, and I did also hand out, um, another sheet that says estimated revenues with kind of some explanation at the bottom. So, right now, based on the proposed budget, we would be one point three million short, which would take about one point three seven mill increase. If we were to get that revenue loss that I had said, that would reduce it by point six four mils, so we could actually have an increase of only about a point seven three estimated, which would be more helpful in order to be able to pass this budget, but, um, unfortunately, the revenue is not there. Um, the grand list is view, you know, it's available for public view if anybody wants to, I believe it's on the website, or if they wanna contact the assessor for more information. Um, but basically, the last town meeting, um, I was able to, uh, print out our, our most recent revenues, and I was able to increase the estimated revenues by another hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. What I'm hoping is before the, um, actual bills go, well, actually, the bills will be going out, but I'm hoping that if we get this extra money from the state and we get some, uh, better revenue coming in before the end of June, that could help with any supplemental. The mill rate has been set at twenty-three point zero four by the Board of Finance at their last meeting on June seventeenth. So, basically, what that means is that if the budget, when the budget passes, if the mill rate that is currently set is not enough to fund the budget that passes, you will be getting a supplemental bill come probably January, and that would be the difference between what we've already paid, you know, sent out in the, um, twenty-three point zero four mill rate, and then whatever the difference would be, you would see that supplement. So, anybody have any questions on revenue?
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome. Sorry.
Victor, did your office have any information you wanted to share about this? You thought you were retired, though, and I'm letting you go?
I'm gonna give him the light on. Um, I'm just gonna briefly go over, um, basically, the Board of Education has made several, um, cuts as we've gone through from the referendums not passing. This latest round, um, we cut one of our summer programs. Um, it is not a program that is indicated in a student's I E P, it, but it was another supplemental special education program. So, we cut that program, and then we turned around and cut equal amounts from the maintenance budget at the elementary school and the maintenance budget at the middle school. So, this time around, um, we didn't have as much to cut as in previous rounds, but, um, we're still, we still feel the cuts, and we would appreciate, you know, anybody's feedback and to let us know what you're thinking, and we're hoping that the efforts that we have made are enough to, um, to make it easier for everyone. So, I guess that's all I wanna say.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments I'd like to make, or I'd have to ask you to come up, uh, to speak into the microphone? Nobody? Sir?
I'll come up, right?
Yep.
I'm gonna have to say my name?
That'd be helpful.
Ira McDonald. So, based on what was presented there, I just wanna make sure I understand. The tax bills are gonna go out on schedule
Correct.
at twenty-three point zero four mils.
Correct.
We are going to keep voting on budgets until we pass a budget.
Correct.
If we ended up passing a budget that was only that twenty-three point zero four mils, based on what I understood you say, it would be one point three, there would be, be one point three million dollars in additional cuts? Needed to get, to, to get to,
Yes, so basically.
to get to no tax increase.
To no tax increase, it would have to be a zero flat budget, and we would have to go back and cut.
So, one point three million, if, if that is roughly, Mr. Doherty would know the numbers specifically, but let's just say eighty-twenty between education and general government. I think that's about, it would be about two hundred and fifty thousand from, um, general government and one point zero five million from education. So, could someone from the, the administration or the board speak to what that would look like to cut a million dollars from where we are now?
So, okay, um, the question was, what would happen if we had to cut another one point one million, one point three million, et cetera? The Board of Ed is only asking for an increase this time around of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. If the Board of Education was to be asked to cut more than that, then we would be in jeopardy of not meeting the minimum budget requirement for the state of Connecticut. Basically, the state will not allow us to do that. We have to spend at least as much this year as we did last year. So, that answers your question right there, I'm sorry.
But, sorry, this, and maybe you can just repeat this for, for the microphone. But, if we were to zero out, the maximum that we could zero out, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Right.
To me, that seems very, very substantial. And there are some, that, you know, in, in the handouts today, it says things like potentially cutting music and art and sports. Ballpark, how many teachers are we talking about if you had to cut eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars? And is there fluff that could be cut, so they can cut eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars without hurting students?
Last year, I sat where you were, and I watched this budget presentation, and I myself asked the same question. There has to be some fluff, we're not getting the full story. Then I was hired by the Board of Ed. So, here I am on the other end, and I'm still a taxpayer. I can tell you that we do not have fluff in our budget. We had some items that we would have liked to have seen brought into the schools, some different programs, some different staff members, but we have stripped all of that away. We have had to strip all of that away. If we have to strip this eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, that would, I can't, let's just say, that is a lot of school staff that would have to be let go. That's a lot of programs that would have to be cut, that would be your after-school activities, that would be your art classes, your music classes, your athletic program, your sports. We would have to look into cutting back the staff in the physical education slash health, which is a required area. We would have to cut back a program that we could allow. I think that's, I mean, we'd also have to, everything, every maintenance item that isn't mandated would have to be cut. And I think anybody who's been coming to these meetings or has seen the feasibility study for the Woodstock Elementary School, if we keep cutting all of the maintenance that needs to be done at these schools, then s- you're going to find yourself in the, the future, not too far off, having to rebuild these schools. You can't, we can't just keep letting them fall to disrepair. That's what would happen for eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars worth of cuts.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Only once? Thank you.
I have to say, oh, I'll get up here first.
I'll speak into the speaker.
I will. So, my name is Paula Enderly, um, I've lived in Woodstock for eight years, nine years. Uh, this is nowhere near as big as the school issues and the town budget itself, but I'm here to talk about the town beach, because it is an issue. So, no constables. We get a lot of people from, um, Bigelow Hollow that come on the weekends. Today, I drove through Bigelow Hollow, there were cars parked all along the sides of the road. Those people find their way to Woodstock without constables. It's just gonna be a free-for-all on the weekends, I'm afraid. Um, without any funding for the town beach. There's no porta potty there right now.
There's, if it wasn't delivered today, it'll be delivered tomorrow.
Okay, I have to just ask you one thing, I thought about this. Is it a handicap?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, thank you, because that was a huge safety, public safety issue. We had hundreds of people at the town beach and nowhere to go to the bathroom. So, eh, this is such a resource for the town, and it's really hard to see it cut. I, and, and on kind of short notice, I mean, I know I haven't been here, I'm sorry, but if, if we could have a little more time and I can maybe work with Karen, and maybe we could come up with some ways, I don't know. But.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, but at this point, we've gotta try and get a budget passed. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No?
I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Kate McDonald, um, for those that might not know me, um, I'm on the Board of Selectmen. Um, so I just wanted to, um, respond to your comment. Um, we appreciate the fact that a lot of these cuts are things that people don't want cut from the budget. Um, we're doing what we can, the problem is, there are a lot of things in both the town budget and the school budget that are state-mandated. So, we don't have the option to cut them, and so we are really limited in terms of what is available to cut. Town beach is not mandated by the state. Um, the transfer station is not mandated by the state, right? So, a lot of these things that we talk about as assets or, um, you know, great things for our town are not the things that are mandated, and so those are the things that we have at our disposal to cut. Um, and unfortunately, every single time the budget gets turned down, it's these things that are going to be on the chopping block. Um, you know, things like the volunteer fire department is not mandated by the state. We don't wanna touch, um, our, our fire and our safety stuff, um, but we're getting to the point where there is not much left that we can cut. So, the, the more that these budgets don't pass, the more things that need to be cut from the budget, the more those, those intangibles that you don't think about on a day-to-day basis, like the town beach, are going to be the things that are no longer available to the town. Um, I just wanted to say that so that it's been said, um, and it's really clear to people there isn't fluff, as was stated, in either of these budgets. And if you haven't looked at them, I encourage you to go and look at them. If you have questions about what line items mean and what line items are, ask, okay? We are not putting a lot of extra things in the budget, we're barely putting in the things that we have to put in. Um, and so, please, please take that into consideration, um, and please think about these things that you really value in our town, um, and, and do your best to help get this budget passed. Thanks.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, my name's Sharon Petro, I've lived in Woodstock for about nineteen years. Uh, had a question for the town, I don't know who can answer it, but what does it cost the town for this meeting and then next week for the referendum? Above and beyond, if we didn't have one?
Uh, the, the referendum that we had, uh, on May twentieth cost twenty-three hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-two cents. Um, there, there, there's no, no real cost for this, uh, for the, for the town meeting, because the, the people that are here presenting are, it's part of their job, so there is no extra cost for the town meeting.
So, the more of these we have, the more money we spend.
Yep, all part of twenty-four hundred dollars each.
There is cost for public notices
Yes.
and stuff like that for this town meeting.
Before my wife and I bought property in town and built, I came into the town hall and I spoke to several, several of the departments, asked them about the town, about taxes specifically, and was told back then that town has a pretty steady tax rate, you know, nothing to worry about. Nineteen years later, my taxes have gone up two hundred and thirty-nine percent. Nearly fourteen percent per year on average. Uh, several factors in there, a- after building the house, but several factors in there, but nothing that would lead me to believe that I'm gonna pay fourteen percent more per year in taxes. Now, I've never put a child through school in Woodstock, so it's not like I've spent a lot of the town's, uh, money on services. So, uh, I, I really need to ask, how is it that there's no fluff in the education? A gentleman asked, how can we cut back eight hundred and eighty-five thousand or whatever the mu- amount was? How is it that you came to this, uh, the town and, and proposed a budget to start off with that was twelve point three pers- three-six percent above last year? In times like this where people are cutting back, have to cut back. But there's no fluff. You came with a twelve point three-six percent ask. Seven additional teachers. Now, what, that's according to this. So, se- seven additional staff. So, se- seven additional staff, whatever it is. Now, we're down to, well, we'll subtract nine. And it's what, four point nine percent that you're requesting?
Three point.
Three point, three point nine percent. Was that not fluff when you went from twelve point three-six percent to three point nine percent? Why would you ask for all that knowing that people have to pay taxes in this town? And they, I've been retired for seven years, so has my wife. I don't have the ability to call my company's pension administrator and say, you know what, I, I wanna spend a little bit more money next year. I wanna go on vacation. Uh, I'd like to eat a little bit more steak than Hamburg next year. So, if you could, put a little bit more money in my pension. And I can't call social security and ask them for more than the raise that they're gonna give me and everybody else, which doesn't keep up. So, how is it that you come to the town and you ask for twelve point three-six percent and then stand here and tell the gentleman, there's no fluff? There has to be fluff. Thirty-eight years, I worked for the same company. We had good years, we had poor years. I had to run a department and my budget was a hundred and thirty million dollars. Good year or bad year, no one had to tell me what my job was as the department head. I looked to cut costs every year. I looked to be as efficient as possible. I looked to cut out any fat I had anywhere. And I don't believe there was much fluff in there. So, it, it just seems disingenuous when you say there's no fluff and we can't cut anything else. But we started at twelve point three-six percent, we're down to three point nine. I think, I think every department head needs to go back or be told, start at zero percent. That's it, zero percent. We can't keep dishing out money and money and money and money. I looked at the, the numbers for the education department. Not an expert, but I would say that in ten years, your enrollment has gone down a hundred and twenty-one students. You're looking to cut seventeen staff members from what you had, the hundred and twenty you had ten years ago. There's still the same fifty special, special education professionals or power educators. Okay, but that's, that's one of those special ed people for every fourteen students now. Granted, they, they may be mandated, but we can't, we can't keep paying. Here's how much I get every month. I can't spend more than I get. You can't keep going to the taxpayers and asking them to pay more and more and more. At some point, it's gotta give. The town is now twice that. No. How many times do we have to come back and say, no? Bring us some more reasonable? The budget, total budget proposals, according to what I figured out, the first time you came back, it was point zero zero three percent that you wanted to reduce it. Now, you're coming back with point zero zero four. It's not enough. It's not enough.
Okay, sir, thank you. I think we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to ask if everybody wants to come up and make a comment. We'll ask you to keep it to three minutes or we might be here past midnight.
To answer your question, sir, the twelve point three-six percent, as we go through the budget process for the school, the very first budget that the school puts forth to the Board of Education is a budget with everything that we would like to see in the budget. We know that we are not getting those things. This is early on in the process. We asked the community, we had a community meeting. We asked them, what did they wanna see? They wanted to see librarians, they wanted to see a Spanish teacher, they wanted to see a math coordinator. The original twelve point three-six percent budget was what the community had asked us to put in. So, when we went to the Board of Education, which is the next step in the budget, the Board of Education asked us to make some cuts and to get to a certain amount. And we worked back and forth through the board. And the Board of Education decided what increase they wanted to bring to the town. We did that. We went to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance told us that there was no way that they were gonna give us nine point oh eight percent. So, they cut us by half, just about half. So, we had to go back and we had to cut more. We got to where the Board of Finance wanted us, we went to referendum, the voters said no. So, we turned around and we went back and we made cuts. We went for the second referendum. And the voters once again said no. So, we went back and we basically at this point have removed almost everything that's not mandated with the exception of athletics, art, and music. So, when I say that there isn't any fluff, I am saying that three point nine, we have the bare minimum of what we can run the schools with, plus these few courses that are the main drivers to get the kids into the school. There, we knew there was no way we were going to the taxpayers, twelve point three-six percent. I'm a taxpayer, no way. It wasn't gonna happen, but there's a process. And that's why we start where we start to get where we are. Because the town needs to know what the people who are in the classrooms every single day, working with the students, working with the families, all day, throughout the year, we need to hear from them what is needed versus what is not needed. And we have to start somewhere. So, yes, we started really high this year at twelve point three-six. And we're now at three point nine. And I'm telling you, at this point, it's just athletics, art, music, and some repairs that we really shouldn't put off, that we will have to put off if this budget is cut any further. So, I'm not being disingenuous, I'm trying to explain the entire process from where we started in November to where we are today, June twenty-fourth. I hope that answers your question. And if you have further questions, if you have further questions, you can reach out to me at the school and I would be more than happy to answer your questions in more depth.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? None? Close it. Channel, I'm just gonna ask you, is there, there's a ceremony that Chris mentioned at the tennis court?
There, brand opening of the tennis court, uh, tennis ball court and pickleball court is tomorrow at six fifteen in honor of opening the Jay Swan Memorial.
Jay Swan, so if anybody is interested, just be sure to come. Ma'am? Why don't you come around this way, just so you know?
Yeah, so you don't trap.
I can jump rope. Don't laugh at me.
Um, hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Jessica Weaver Voothboos. I am one of your friendly neighborhood registrars. I know Christine already mentioned absentee ballots, but if you don't mind, I'd like to take just a few seconds to clear up some confusion that I have been seeing. So, if you are a registered voter in Woodstock, you may vote, even if you are not a property owner. If you are registered to vote in another town or another state, but you are a property owner as of October first, two thousand twenty-four, and you are on the grand list, then you may come and vote. We will check you off that way. That is because this is, you pay taxes in town and this is about your taxes. So, as Christine said, absentee ballots become available after the meeting, never before. We are not able to mail them because it's too short of a window. There is a drop box in the front of the building, though.
I can open it.
Oh, okay, we'll take care of that. And, um, glad I mentioned it. Um, and, uh, again, voting will happen here. There will be curbside in case people have mobility issues. I'm trying to make sure I answered any of the ques- all the questions. If anybody has any other voter questions, I am here. I will be hanging out with Christine after the meeting. Please feel free to come up and ask me further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions or comments? Christine, I'm just curious, I guess, what was the percentage of voter turnout?
Uh, what was it? It was less than, um, it was.
About twenty percent.
Thank you, John.
Twenty percent, okay, okay. So, I think everybody, everybody has strong feelings about the budget, pro or con, but I think I've kind of underscored it's all important that we all get out to vote and encourage friends and other people to get out to vote because this is probably one of the most important issues that we vote on each year, the town. Us?
Maybe Chan can answer this. So, if this budget doesn't pass, then where do we go next? How much deeper? We're gonna stop going into basic services?
Did you hear that?
I didn't hear the question.
He says if the budget doesn't pass now, how much deeper, we'll have to go to basic services?
Oh, it all depends on the recommendation of the Board of Finance. The Board of Selectmen only adjusts their proposed budget based on the recommendation of the Board of Finance. Um, there's different factors that play into what number they decide. Uh, the first time was a very small number. This, this current round was significant, as everybody knows. Um, as far as where the Board of Selectmen are gonna cut from, if we need to cut deeper, I, I can't speak for the board and we need to do more consideration and a lot of those decisions will be based on the amount that we have to cut.
Thank you, Chairman. Any other questions or comments? I guess we can close the, sir?
Uh, very briefly, I, I think people,
Drag or something?
Thank, sorry. Ethan Wersler, Crooked Trail. Um, I think everyone likes to talk about how to spend the money, but I think a topic of conversation into the next years and into the future is how to bring in more revenue. Uh, we're gonna be here again next year and the year after, and the year after that, into infinity, unless we think about how to get more taxpayers in Woodstock. Because things get more expensive. It's the, it's life. If you're working a company for nineteen years, uh, every year, you're making a little bit more money because things get more expensive, right? And it's incremental and so should any budget increase should be incremental. But it's just the truth. It's the real world. And so, and for whatever many years I've spent in the real world, I can tell you that if we don't figure out how to get more people building in Woodstock, bringing business to Woodstock.
No, 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 no.
Let the man speak.
Yeah, this is not a vote, sorry.
Yeah, I, 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 listen, I understand. I hear you. No one wants business in Woodstock. But, uh, the truth is, we are growing as a state. People for the first time are moving to Woodstock. And do you want them moving somewhere else and spending their millions of dollars somewhere else? Or do you want in ten years to be able to pay about as much as you're paying right now because someone moved down the street? And at the last town meeting I went to, we gave away a hundred and fourteen, a hundred and fourteen acres of land for free. And that's a decision that someone made in the town and I understand that. But the truth is, maybe we could have built, uh, housing for seniors. So, my grandma, who can, who lives in Woodstock, who's been here for thirty years, can move down the street one day, as opposed to having to move to Putnam. Because I wanna live near my grandparents and they can't buy a house here. I can't buy a house here. So, something to think about. I just wanna say about the revenue part. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Might be a conversation, good conversation for another day. Uh, any other questions or comments? Ma'am?
The last special meeting that we had, I don't see any of the, um, meeting minutes anywhere. Is it posted or printed here tonight?
They're on the website, under the town clerk section.
They're on there.
Okay.
When were they posted?
Um, about a week after the last meeting.
Well, I looked for them. I didn't see them.
But they're up there. I posted them.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll end the discussion and then be adjourned to the vote is on again, the date, Chris?
July first.
July first and it's from noon till eight?
Eight.
Yes, noon to eight, yes.
Noon to eight, okay. Thank you, everybody. Please be sure to get out and vote. Thank you, everybody for coming tonight.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yes. Kate, second discussion, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.